Good evening and welcome to the 2017 Candidates Night for the Sausalito City Council, presented by the Sausalito Women’s Club and the Marin Chapter of the League of Women Voters. My name is Molly Squires. I am the 2017-2018 president of the Sausalito Women’s Club. We are a nonprofit organization, or I’m sorry, we are a nonpartisan organization. So nonprofit, that believes in an informed electorate. And so for over 30 years, we have partnered with the League of Women Voters to present Candidates Night to our community. I want to thank the Sausalito Women’s Club Civics Committee chaired by Claudia Kennedy for all the work, for all the work they put into this event and the work they do throughout the year to keep our membership informed about local matters. I also want to thank Jeff Shiraj and the Spinnaker for providing us with this beautiful venue. Now I’d like to introduce the candidates in alphabetical order: Melissa Blaustein, Susan Cleveland Knowles, and Bill Warner. Finally, I’d like to introduce the women from the League of Women Voters. Okay, I’d like to introduce Vida Flores, who will then introduce her team. Vida is the moderator for us tonight from the League of Women Voters. And before she begins, please silence your cellphones. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vida Flores from the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I’m pleased to introduce Ann Laser as our timekeeper, and pardon me, Ann Batman is our timekeeper here. Can all the candidates see her? As well as Ann Laser, our question sorter, and Nancy Bell, our question sorter. We have three candidates running for a one-year term. We have someone at the table. He will not be recognized. His name is not on the ballot through Marin...
His name is not Will Moore.
His name is not on the ballot with Marin Elections Department. In order to be an official write-in candidate, you have to submit your paperwork in advance. This candidate has not done that. So, we’ll go ahead and get started, and anyone who would like to subdue our fourth person at the table is welcome. I’d like to give you a little background information as we begin. On April 18, 2017, councilmember Herb Weiner, with the term expiring in November 2018, resigned from the Sausalito City Council. At the council’s May 2, 2017, regular meeting, the city council discussed the vacancy and directed staff to solicit applications for interested residents. Applications were accepted from May 3 to May 17 to fill the remainder of the term, which will expire in November 2018. The city council interviewed 11 city residents who submitted applications to fill the city council vacancy. At a special meeting on May 30, the council selected a subset of four applicants to move forward in the appointments process. The applicants were, at that time, Susan Cleveland Knowles, Kate Store, Keith Stoneking, and Bill Weiner. Warner, pardon? Bill Warner. On June 6, the city council held a vote to appoint a candidate to a vacant city council posting position. The council’s vote was a two-two split for Stephen Cleveland Knowles and Bill Warner. Susan, Susan! It’s dark up here, everybody. I forgot my glasses. That’s right. Okay, since an appointment required at least three votes, the council was not able to make an appointment. Therefore, the city council adopted a resolution calling for a special election, November 7, 2017, to fill the vacant council seat for one year until November 7, 2018. Our candidates to my right, who will be participating this evening, are Melissa Blaustein, Susan Cleveland Knowles, and Bill Warner. Our candidates will have two minutes to make an opening statement, two minutes to answer questions, and two minutes for a closing statement. And I’d like to thank this magnificent group of engaged citizens who showed up this evening. Melissa, would you like to begin?
I wasn’t able to check my mic. Is it... okay, great. Well, I want to thank the Sausalito Women’s Club and the League of Women Voters, and indeed everyone who’s taken the time to be here tonight and participate in this very important political process and be engaged in the conversation. So I’ll tell you a little bit about myself. I’ve always loved Sausalito. I’m a graduate of Sausalito Nursery School. And ever since I went to Redwood High School and started a suicide prevention program for the entire Tam Union District, I have been engaged in every single level of government to public service. I served at the Obama White House. I worked for Gavin Newsom. I worked for Gabby Giffords. And I have a Masters in Public Policy and worked at the United Nations Women’s Program and the United Nations Environmental Program. So, and for a living, I run my own not-for-profit advocacy organization, which consensus builds on global policy around the world. So you’re probably wondering, “Great, you have all this international experience, all this national experience. Why now? Why Sausalito? Why are you here?” Well, I think with what’s happening at the national level, we can all agree that there’s a real need for civility. Really feels like we don’t have control of the political process. And I feel like now, more than ever, it is extremely important to get engaged and do something at the local level. And what do I mean by that? Get engaged, do something at the local level? Well, of course, running for city council, that’s why I’m here. But I think we can all really do a better job of listening to each other. And I’m here because, no, I haven’t served on any boards or commissions in Sausalito, but I think that’s a good thing, because I’m bringing a fresh perspective. And I’ve spent all of my time here listening to as many residents as possible, and I will continue to do that for you as your city council member. And I’m really looking forward to your questions and an ongoing conversation with you tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Before you begin, could I ask you to hold your applause until all the candidates have an opportunity to make an opening statement? Thank you.
Okay, hi, good evening. I’d also like to thank the League and the Sausalito Women’s Club and all of you for coming out tonight. This is such a great crowd, and this is going to be an important election, so it’s really wonderful to see so much engagement. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and my Sausalito story. I grew up in a very small town in rural New Hampshire, and my mom was our town moderator. And we had Town Hall Meeting style of government, and it looked a lot like this. We would come together in the middle school gym, and people of all stripes and all opinions would speak their minds, and we tried to build consensus on important issues facing our community. When I moved to Sausalito 16 years ago to marry my husband, Sausalito felt like coming home. It has the same small-town character as my hometown in New Hampshire, and it has the same active participation and great culture. Now I’m raising my two kids here, and it’s so wonderful to watch them growing up in this amazing community. From warm nights at Spinnaker, sorry, Scudmacher Beach, to having them get the education of a lifetime, helping build the Matthew Turner tallship as part of their school program. It’s just been a wonderful experience. I am so dedicated to this community. I’ve been on the Planning Commission for four years. I’ve served on many local committees, and I’ve actively volunteered in my children’s public school in town. I’m a consensus builder. I like to listen to everyone’s point of view before making a decision. I want to build consensus in Sausalito, and for me, that means preserving our small-town character, but recognizing that change is inevitable and we must thoughtfully plan for it. I’d like to thank all of the people in town who have endorsed my campaign. I’d especially like to thank the Sierra Club, the Marin Women’s PAC, and our congressman, Jared Huffman, for endorsing me, along with so many other folks in town. So thank you very much. I’m so excited to be here tonight.
Again, please hold your applause. The end of the forum. Thank you very much. Bill, would you like to begin?
Sure. I think I’ll just stay here. I’m running for city council because I believe I have the experience, the temperament, and the concern for all facets of our community to fully engage what I believe is the soul of Sausalito and to be an integral part of its continuing evolution. I was born in San Francisco, raised in the Hayda Excrete, graduated from Lowell High School, received my BA and Master of Architecture degrees from Yale University. After working briefly in Hawaii, my wife and I moved to New Zealand, where I taught architectural history and design for two years at the Auckland University School of Architecture. I returned to San Francisco to go to work for the architectural firm Skidmore and Merrill. In 1976, I opened my own architectural practice in San Francisco. Moved my residence to Sausalito in 1983, and in 2008, I relocated my office to 30 Liberty Shipway in the Marin ship, a building I had designed in 1999. My years of public service in the Sausalito community began in 1988, when the city council appointed me to the Design Review Board and was followed by appointments from different city councils to planning commissions in ’95 and again in 2010, numerous task forces and other things. I was appointed by the Marin Superior Court to two consecutive years on the Marin Community Civil Grand Jury. I currently serve on the Planning Commission and the vice chair of the General Plan Update Advisory Committee. I understand and know the history, legacy, and nostalgia of Sausalito’s colorful past and present. I will apply that to our vision for its future while acting in the present and doing my best to manage its many uncertainties. I can most effectively realize these ambitions as a member of the Sausalito City Council and by engaging all elements of the community.
Please turn the microphone off. Could I ask the CMCTV to cut the mic? Going to go ahead with question number one, and this will be directed at Susan Cleveland Knowles. “When did you move to Sausalito, and what have you done to show your commitment to the town?” And we have several versions of this question also. “How long have you lived in Sausalito, and what have you contributed?” So those, in a nutshell, please tell us the breadth of your experience here in Sausalito.
So you want us to remain seated?
Yes, please remain seated. Please remain seated. It’s our League of Women Voters standard for questions to remain seated.
So, as I said in my introduction, I moved here about 16 years ago, when I married my husband, and have been actively engaged in the community since then. I think one of the things I’m proudest, most proud of, is that we’ve really formed a great community here in town with a lot of other active parents and a lot of just good friends. And Sausalito really does feel like home now. In terms of what I’ve done, as I mentioned, I’ve served on the Planning Commission for four years, and that has been a really amazing experience. Not only are there important decisions being made at the Planning Commission level, but you get to meet residents from all over town. You get to meet small business owners who are coming to town seeking permits to start new enterprises, and you get to take part in setting policy for the city government. So being able to listen and build consensus on the Planning Commission, while Bill and I are running against each other, we more often agree than not on the Planning Commission. I’ve also been really involved with my kids, local schools. I was on the Housing Element Task Force, which was a real challenge. People had a lot of strong views on the housing element, and we came to a really good collaborative approach. I worked with both Mayor Ray Withy and Vice Mayor Joan Cox on that committee, and then I was also able to participate in the Short Term Rental Housing Task Force, another very controversial issue, but I worked well with the members of that. Ben Brown is on the Landmarks Board, and Jill Hoffman on our city council. And again, we came up with a great collaborative, middle-road solution to that. So I’ve been actively engaged for the full 16 years that I’ve been here. And one of the things I would like to mention, picking up on something Melissa said, our kids went to the Sausalito Nursery School. And one of the things that’s so great about that school is they really teach active engagement in your community, and it’s something that we’ve taught to our kids as well. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Bill Warner will be next.
I sort of covered a little bit of that in my opening remark, but maybe I should add a little color to it. When I first moved here in 1983, I was living in a, we call it a townhouse, up on Casnow, that was owned by a man named Dick Seashore. And in 1988, he caught me on the deck of the townhouse while I was washing the car, and he said, “You know, you should really apply for the Design Review Board.” At that time, I was very busy. My office in San Francisco was doing a number of different things, and I suggested to him that I thought that was not a very good idea, because I spent a lot of time negotiating things and advocating for my clients before Design Review Boards and Planning Commissions, and I wasn’t really too fond of most of them. And he said, “Well, that’s why we need you on the Social Security Design Review Board.” And then I said, “Well, I don’t know about that.” And he said, “Well, I want you to apply. Doesn’t mean you necessarily will get appointed by the city council, but if you apply...” Sort of happened then, too. “If you, if you apply, I won’t raise your rent next year.” So I applied. In addition to that, a number of the other things that I’ve been involved in have always been situations where I get a phone call from the mayor or from somebody else in the council saying, “We’re going to reform the parking policy task force.” And this was Amy Belser that called me, and she said, “Kate Sears is going to chair it. I want you to be vice chair.” I had just come out of surgery, having my... okay, I’m done.
They’ll ask you to turn off your microphone?
What’s my question?
Actually, my earliest memories are here in Sausalito. I remember decorating the ferry with the rest of the Sausalito Nursery School students and the Halloween parade, which I’m really excited to have up with that in the next couple of weeks. And I’ve been really thrilled to be walking up and down these streets again and knocking on doors and seeing people that have known me my whole life. It’s really amazing to knock on a door and see someone like Maggie Tucker, who I went to school with Nikki Checker, or just running, I knocked on someone’s door. They weren’t home, but I could see pictures of, from when we were in nursery school together and getting to know all of the parents again and having them see me as an adult has been a really amazing experience. And as I said in my opening statement, no, I haven’t been on any boards or commissions in Sausalito, and I’m young, but I think that that is a huge benefit, because I’m bringing a fresh perspective to the city council. And what I’ve been able to do is listen to as many residents as possible. And what I’ve heard when I’ve listened to residents is that there are some opposing viewpoints. And of course, yes, it’s great that we are also collegial, but occasionally the voting records of the other candidates have been on the opposite side. And I just want to really unite both voices, old and new, here in town, and move us forward together. And I think my experience, consensus building and finding common ground for a living and at every level of government, shows that I’m very capable and able to do that. And I’m very excited to be able to bring my experience back to the community after having been gone, and I really am looking forward to hopefully having an opportunity to serve you on the city council.
This next question has been addressed by 13 different people on 13 different cards, so it’s something that we’re concerned about. And it’s posed at Bill Warner to begin. “Sea level rise is a certain threat for Sausalito. What will you do to prepare Sausalito from the climate change, sea level rise, and what unique qualities do you have to leave?” And along that same line, can you tell us about your thoughts on the city’s climate action plan?
Thanks to all 13 people who asked that question. I’m surprised it wasn’t more than 13, because it’s happening, and it’s going to happen. Global climate change may bring with it all many more impacts than just sea level rise. Drastic changes in temperature and other things are going to happen. Planning for this has been ongoing for years and continues today. There have been major planning programs in the county having to do with sea level rise. The General Plan Update has a new section that is going to have to be addressed in the update that hasn’t been in there, and that was just implemented two years ago, 2015, sorry. And it’s called AB 379, and it’s Climate Adaptation, which to me, my way of thinking, is far more important than anything else that we’re doing, because it asks the question of what are we going to do when it comes up? How are we going to resist it? Are we going to try to withstand the change? Is it going to be toughness and seawalls and so on? Are we going to seek an ability to recover from the change? Would we all rather be on houseboats than on the ground? And finally, or do we just seek the ability to succumb to change, such as parts of the north end of the Marin ship, which desperately want to be back to wetlands? All of these things are going to have to be discussed and worked on, and they will go well beyond what the general plan requirements are.
Thank you. Next will be Melissa.
Thank you very much for everyone that wrote in with this question. I think we’ve all seen with the events in the last few days how incredibly important it is to be prepared for the impact of climate change. And I actually did a lot of research on climate change technology transfer. Is my mic on?
Can we get the media center to confirm?
Okay, all right. Can I start over? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I’m sorry if I’m repeating myself, if those of you already heard from me, but I really thank you for that question. I think we’ve all seen in the last few days how extremely important it is to be prepared for the impact of climate change and to have a plan. I worked at the United Nations Environmental Program doing research on climate change technology transfer in developing countries, but I saw phenomenal public-private partnerships that were really working to start to mitigate the effects. I have thought a lot about this issue, because I live on the water in a houseboat, and I want to say thank you to the Sausalito Sustainability Commission, because they have made sea level rise their topic of emphasis for this year, and they are really starting to bring this to the attention of more residents. Obviously, if you’ve ever driven through Manzanita during the rain, or if you’ve ever lived at Cape 5 or 6, then you know that sea level rise is already happening. We’re already experiencing flooding. And I would like to, I know we do have, we are finally starting to pay attention to climate, but we need to do more. I want to see a working group amongst all of the communities that are on the water focused specifically on sea level rise. And I would like us also to look more forward-thinking to an emergency preparedness plan that has an emphasis specifically on climate change and climate events. So I really appreciate you bringing this up, and I think it’s very important.
Great, thanks for the great question, and just want to echo a lot of thoughts that have already been brought up. Sea level change is happening, and it’s going to affect a lot of communities in Marin and around our country. It’s going to very much impact Sausalito. If you look at the maps, big areas along Bridgeway, the Marin ship, and other areas, especially at the north of town, near the intersection with Mike’s Bike and the Bayside Cafe, are going to be regularly inundated, so we need to plan for this now. I also want to thank the Sustainability Commission for their great work on this, and also for city staff specifically raising this and pushing this issue in the General Plan Advisory Committee. This is something that we need to plan for now, or, you know, have been planning for, but really need to put an emphasis on. Marin County, luckily for us, has been proactively studying this situation. Kate Sears, our county supervisor, has been actively promoting it and getting a lot of great input from citizens, and there have been a lot of really good surveys. But now is the time to move beyond studying and talking and get to specific action items for our town. And I’m really excited that the General Plan Advisory Committee is going to take this up. I’m very excited about the work the Sustainability Commission is doing. This is a very important issue, and I’m really looking forward to grappling with it on the city council.
Great, could you turn the microphone? Our next question, our next question is posed to Melissa. Please hold your thoughts. If you can, sit at the dais in a quiet fashion. We will ask a gentleman to escort him out of the building.
That won’t be necessary. There’s no point in being here. You’re not getting the whole story.
Thank you. And our question number three will be... “In light of the tragedy in Napa and Sonoma this week, what evaluations... In light of the tragedy in Napa and Sonoma this week, what evaluations have been done and still need to be done to avoid a similar tragedy?” And a similar question includes, “How would you describe Sausalito’s disaster preparedness plan? This asks on a scale of 1 to 10, and why?” So Melissa, would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you. I just think this mic isn’t working, so I’m going to use Susan’s. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Again, I think in light of recent events, we have to really pay attention to if we are ready for a natural disaster or some sort of emergency. We are lucky to have a town that has taken a proactive approach and has an emergency preparedness plan. I have not specifically, in light of the recent events, reviewed exactly what measures we’ve taken. I think that what I’m most concerned about are, excuse me, is the fact that our city employees, I think we saw with what’s happening in fires, not everyone was able to get there in time. There wasn’t enough notice. There weren’t enough firefighters that were living in Sonoma that were able to be on site. And what I have seen from talking to city employees is that less than 10 of our city employees actually live here in Sausalito. So if we were to face a natural disaster, they wouldn’t be able to necessarily get here in time. So if we had a fire event like what we just saw, our firefighters are living in the East Bay. Some of them are living in Sacramento. Same with our police officers and some of our teachers because of the affordability issue. And I think we need to be taking care of the people that take care of our community. So I would like to advocate for a first right of refusal in affordable housing units for our city employees. So for our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers, I think it’s really important that they have an opportunity to be here, to share this community that we all love, but also to be here to take care of us in case we do have to suffer from the impacts of a natural disaster. Thank you.
Great, so thank you to the people that asked about this. It is kind of hard to be here tonight and know that there are so many people just to the north of us suffering through a... the north of us suffering through just unbearable tragedy. And, you know, I know everyone has probably seen the pictures online and, you know, has stories of friends, relatives, and I know there are a lot of city workers in Sausalito who are heavily affected by the tragedy. So thank you, excuse me, thank you for raising this. So Sausalito does have an emergency preparedness plan. I don't know if any of you participated. There were a number of excellent workshops a few years ago where everybody was given a kind of community place to go to, to be able to develop a plan and find family and relatives if we do have an emergency. So I think the city is taking active steps. I think every emergency that we go through is just another reminder that we have to be vigilant. I can't really rank our emergency preparedness plan on a scale of one to 10, but I know, I'm sure, that we can always do better. The other thing I think is every town can have an emergency preparedness plan, but we must work with our county partners and our neighboring cities to be able to respond in an emergency. Just as we've seen up in Sonoma and Napa, you can't respond to an emergency on a vast scale by yourself. You need help from your neighboring counties and your neighbors. So we need to work with the county on that. I also want to thank the City Council last night for approving the updated ferry landing. I have spoken on that very often, and I do think that it will serve us well in an emergency if it comes to that. I agree that we need to have our first responders close, and I'm interested in hearing more about Melissa's plan for a first right of refusal. Those are very expensive programs, and we need to find a funding mechanism to be able to do that.
I don't know how many, if any of you have seen the video that was done by, or for, the Southern Marin Fire District that showed...
We can't hear you.
That, is this on?
Yeah. Get closer.
I don't know if any of you have seen the video that was done by the Southern Marin Fire District for them that simulates a firestorm hitting Sausalito. It's unbelievably frightening because the way it begins is that it begins in the GGNRA. And because of the way the winds are here, it comes directly over 101, straight down onto the hills of Sausalito. And because of all of the wonderful green trees that we have and all of the shingled roofs we have, the place burns down in a hurry. So would it, if you listen to what Southern Marin Fire District would like us to do, it basically cut everything down that's green within 45 feet of our house. Now, none of us probably would like to see Sausalito with no trees. But all of us probably would like to see Sausalito come up with an ordinance that says every home has to have a Class A fire-resistant roof, which is the first place to start because those fires begin with embers landing on roofs that are not Class A roofs.
Please hold your applause. Okay, our next question will drill down on some detail. And how will you address the unfunded pension liability? You know, what are your plans to change and modernize the pension issues that we have here in Sausalito? We'll begin with Susan.
Great. Thanks for that question. So all towns and cities in California and across the country really need to grapple with unfunded liability with pensions and other employee benefits. So this is a really important thing, and we need to take care and make sure that our town is protected from any unexpected and large costs. The good news is that Sausalito has been a leader in this area and has taken a lot of steps to reduce our unfunded liability and go through pension reform to the extent legally possible. The other good news is that the Civil Grand Jury made a number of recommendations, and Sausalito has followed all of them. So for now, I think Sausalito is in really excellent shape, and I think we can thank the present and former City Council members for that, in addition to our really excellent financial staff in town. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't remain vigilant and keep a very close eye on this situation so that we can be in good financial shape going forward. And I would be very vigilant on this issue. I did just want to address an email that was floating around town about the fact that I am myself a city employee of San Francisco, and that that put into question my ability to intelligently address pension issues. And I would strongly refute that. If I'm elected to the City Council, my first duty, my first fiduciary duty and obligation will be to the city and county, sorry, to the city of Sausalito and its residents. So I would give that first priority. Thank you.
Pension crisis, the pension crisis in the country is working its way through the courts, and in particular in California, where there are court cases right now that approach or that deal with the possibility of reducing those promises that have been made in the past, which is an ethical and a moral issue, I think, that the courts have the handle. There are those economists that claim that the financial systems of most American cities will not survive unless the spending is curtailed, and that the spending will end up coming out of the pockets of taxpayers eventually, or a reduction in services, or all kinds of other belt-tightening things in order to cover the gifts that were given in the past. Though I agree with what Susan said about Sausalito having done many of the things that came from the Civil Grand Jury, which I was on, but that... The part of it all that bothers me is when I watch on TV and see the presentation made by the hired actuary, which looks like the work of Houdini. I'm not convinced that we're in as great a shape as those pretty pictures indicate.
Thank you for this question. It's very important. And I spent a lot of time thinking about pension reform, and I would like to acknowledge the city staff and for all of the hard work that you do, and also, of course, Melanie Purcell, the head of the budget here in town, who came to us from Flint, Michigan. So actually, she would know a thing or two about a budget crisis. It is, it's true that Sausalito was the first town in the United States, essentially, to move forward with pension reform, and we're starting to take some good steps. We have moved 37 of Sausalito city employees onto PEPRA, which is the negotiated new California rules around your contribution to pensions. We were also, apart from the pensions reform, able to remove or get rid of health benefit program, which was costing the city a lot of money. However, that being said, what neither of the other candidates at the table brought up is that next year, actually, the pensions are coming up for renegotiation. So this is going to happen very, very soon. And the reality is that we need to address this liability. It's likely, not just at our city level, but that across the state, employee contributions are going to have to go up. And when that happens, what are we going to offer back to the city employees who work so hard for us here at Sausalito? And what are we going to offer back to the unions who are here bargaining on their behalf and can be quite a force? As I mentioned before, I think if we're a community that's not taking care of the people that take care of us, we're not doing a good enough job. And I think a first right of refusal program that we can offer our city employees is a bargaining chip that we can use, which will help us to reduce our fiscal liability and will also help us to take care of our city workers so that we can really solve some of these problems together.
Now that the ferry, now that the ferry proposal has been approved, what are the next steps to manage tourism and bike traffic to relieve downtown congestion? We'll start with Bill.
The price, the price we pay for living in such a lovely place is that a lot of other people want to visit it. And I live on the corner of Richardson and Second Street, so I am aware of the bicycle issues. Bicycle issues are, they're not, the same for all the bicycles. The commuter bicyclists know what they're doing. Even the spandex warriors know what they're doing in downtown. And they come through at a speed which is generally even higher than the speed limit. And they also don't necessarily pay too much attention to stop signs. But it's the folks that come around the corner of Richardson and Second Street after having the harrowing experience of coming down Alexander Avenue, and when they see the view of Angel Island, they squiggle, and their hands come off the bicycle handlebars, and out come their phones, and they're taking pictures while they're running down. Anyway, and then not long after that, we hear the sounds of the ambulance and the bike. And that happens three or four or five times on the weekend, every day. I mean, each day of the weekend. Anyway, what do we do about it? What we do about it is it's time to stop bickering between Sausalito Plus, the Bike Return Company, the Ferry District Union Cruise, and arrive at some solutions that make it simpler and easier for the visitors to our town to feel welcomed and accommodated. And I'll work toward creating and implementing such a transportation plan which takes into account not only the bicycles, but the tour buses and all the rest of the things that show up downtown.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you for bringing up this question. I have talked to hundreds of residents, and this is always the first thing that comes up. So I decided to really take it on myself to look into, why can't we solve this problem? And what's it like to be a tourist in Sausalito on a bike? So I rented a bike from one of the bike rental agencies in San Francisco and rode my bike over the Golden Gate Bridge. My companion's tire fell off. And on the way, before we left, we asked them some pretty basic questions. Are there parts of the ride that I should be worried about? Where can I park my bike? How do I get on the ferry to come back? Well, they said, there's nothing to worry about. It's really safe. You'll be fine. Oh, you can park your bike anywhere. Oh, yeah, just get in line for the ferry, take this ticket. So of course, we, right now, the way the communication is working between the bike rental agencies and the city of Sausalito, it's not working. So we really do need to come together and bring everybody to the table. I actually wrote an op-ed in the IJ about specifically my plan for the bikes, which I would like to see the bikes go into Fort Baker. And we have a Sausalito resident here who started a bike return program. I think the bikes should participate in the bike return program at Fort Baker, and then there could be a shuttle that would still allow the tourists to come into downtown Sausalito and shop. Now, I've heard from a couple of people, yesterday, there was concerns raised about the cost of having the bikes go into Fort Baker. I just want to say, I think it's a safer route. Obviously, the National Park Service has expressed interest in this becoming more of a tourism hub. There's plenty of open space there. There's the Bay Area Discovery Museum. So at the very least, I'd like to see the family bikes going there because I'm really scared about all of these little kids with no helmets riding into downtown Sausalito. And if we can eliminate at least some of the congestion by taking this alternate route, then we're really taking smart steps. And I would also like to see us explore more smart city solutions, interactive kiosks downtown, and better directing of how the bikes operate. And for those of you as well who are real cyclists, you know, we need to do more for the roads as well, looking into the general plan update and how we do address bikes on the road.
Thank you. So like many people here that I've met, I did first come to Sausalito on a bike. It was my own bike when I was living in San Francisco. It was one of the things that really made me fall in love with this town. And I've met a couple who actually moved here four years ago after they rented a bike, rented bikes, and rode over the Golden Gate Bridge and found that they wanted to make Sausalito their home. So there's a lot of good that comes from the rental bike programs, but there's obviously also a lot of negative impacts that we need to take seriously and make a priority to address. Bill already mentioned a lot of the great things that the city is already doing, and I think the city needs to continue to encourage the ambassador program, the bike return program, and cooperation with the Bridge District. The city also needs to, I think, would be a good idea to start a permit program that would really bring the bike rental companies to the table. We've had a lot of issues over the years trying to negotiate with them and get voluntary agreements for certain things. A permit program to be able to park your tourist rental bike here in Sausalito would require tourist rental companies to pay a permit fee that would help us enforce, and we would, could have conditions on the permit that could really help to alleviate some of the negative impacts on our community. I recently drafted a similar program in San Francisco, and I think it would have a lot of benefits to our community. While I like the idea of the Fort Baker issue, the city has been working with the National Park Service for years on that idea. I think it's definitely an idea to pursue, but there are a lot of obstacles to that, including that the Park Service needs to do an environmental impact report and environmental remediation to allow the bikes to come down from vista point. So it will be a few years at least and some money until that's a realistic solution. So in the meantime, I think we need to work with the tools that we have and address this very serious problem that so many people feel very strongly about.
Thank you. We're back at the top of the order, and this question begins with Melissa. Would each of the candidates please comment on what, if any, role the Sausalito City Council should play in the struggle to improve educational opportunities for the school district? And I also have another question that wants to discuss the City Council versus school administrators. How will you differentiate between the two?
Thank you very much for this very important question. And, you know, when I went to nursery school here, most of, many of the students left Sausalito, either moved or went to St. Hillary's or a private school. And I'm really thrilled that Willow Creek Academy is here and that it is an incredible school that was started from concerned parents here in our community. And Willow Creek Academy, half of the students are from Marin City. It's a great school, and I'm very happy that it exists in Sausalito. With that being said, I want every student in Sausalito and in Marin City to be able to have access to a great education. I think the school is a good thing for that. But what I really think the City Council can do, because fortunately, or fortunately, depends on how you look at it, the jurisdiction of the schools is the Marin County, or Marin City-Sausalito School Board. So there's only so much that the City Council can really do, other than to communicate with the school board and make our thoughts known. However, if you really look at it, based on, from where I come from, having grown up here, I see a deeper socioeconomic issue. I think that we need to do more to build community with our neighbors in Marin City to be able to provide quality education for every student in Sausalito and Marin City. We used to have a flea market here in town that we shared with Marin City, and it was a great place for all of us to come together, to talk about our week, to get to know one another. We used to have more joint programs at the library. I think, and I've talked to people like Nancy Johnson, who has said, please, can we do more with each other as neighbors? I think we could have a shared parking rack. I think that that is where this starts, and that's what the City Council can do to improve the schools, to work harder, to build community with our neighbors.
Can you hear me? Great. So the schools in the Sausalito-Marin City School District are not within the jurisdiction of the City Council. And there was an election last year for the Sausalito-Marin City School Board, and there will be another election next year. And that's where we should really focus our attention on the schools. As citizens of Sausalito, though, I think we all should do our part to make sure that every child in the Sausalito-Marin City School District gets an excellent education. And we should support both schools in our district. I think it's really important for our town that we have viable public education opportunities. It's been a great joy to me to see the families in Sausalito be able to really stay here with public school opportunities and to really build community. And picking up on a few things that Melissa said, there are a lot of great cooperative programs going on between Marin City and Sausalito. And the city council can encourage those, but I think mainly, a lot of citizens are doing a lot. We've got a great Little League. That's a Sausalito-Marin City Little League that has been hugely revitalized in my time here. My son has played in that Little League every year since Jack Schwartz was his T-ball coach. I think he went more for the donuts that Jack would bring than the T-ball, but he did grow to love the game. And we, so local folks have started monthly picnics at Rocky Graham Park, thanks to Erica Ducati and many others, that bring together families from both Sausalito and Marin City. And those have been just wonderful experiences to go on a warm summer evening and beautifully restored Rocky Graham in Marin City and share stories and really get to know each other over food and watching our kids play in the park.
I agree that an important element in the quality of life in any town is the quality of its schools. However, we're running for city council, not for school board. And it is perhaps a moral and ethical obligation of city council members, as it is of all members of the community, to assist where they can in assuring that quality education is made available to all of the, all of the people, all the children in our area and in the school district. When you have a school district, however, that is being seriously questioned, or in fact investigated, by the Attorney General's Office and also by the County Board of Education, there is something wrong. And though the diversity exists, it seems that the inclusion does not. And I would say that if the city council wants to become involved, then the way to become involved is to not wave your finger accusingly from the dais which happened here.
We still have time for more questions. If you'd like to submit your questions, please raise your hand. Does anyone need a question card? The next question will begin with Susan. How do you feel about short-term rentals? And how will you vote if a vote comes to city council? We'll begin with Susan.
Great, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I was on the Short Term Rental Task Force, which was appointed by the city council to address this controversial issue. As most of you know, we have a complete ban on short-term rentals, which are rentals for less than 30 days now in Sausalito. But as you may have also noticed, that ban is not working. There are more than 130, or an unknown number, but at least that number, of short-term rentals actively happening in town right now. So our Short Term Rental Task Force tried to look at balancing the negative impacts to our community from short-term rentals, which are taking up our valuable housing stock, neighborhood impacts such as trash left on the wrong days, parking, parties, and all of that, and the inability to enforce the current ordinance. So we grappled hard with that issue. We heard a lot of citizens, we heard frustration of citizens with the short-term rental issue. But we also heard from a lot of folks in town, including seniors and people, families with young children, that the income that they got from short-term rentals allowed them to stay in town and afford to live in our expensive community. So the solution that we came up with was to allow a limited pilot program for short-term rentals, which would allow only permanent Sausalito residents to host, and only for a short period of time. Hosts would have to pay a registration fee, which would cover the city's costs of active enforcement. And the hosts would also pay TOT, or Transit Occupancy Tax, which would add revenue for the city to the general fund. So we came up with this solution, which I think is something that we should try. We have a diverse group of people on the task force, and we heard from a lot of people. I know it's a controversial issue, but I think it's something we should try as a pilot. Thank you.
Bill?
It's already been pointed out, Sausalito has a 30-day minimum rental ordinance, which has been on the books for decades. And it's not unusual. It's true in lots of towns. It applies to all residential zones. What's happened is that unfortunately, an unregulated multi-billion-dollar advertising and scheduling platform of Airbnb has created an incentive for property owners to violate that law. Whether there's 100 of them or not, it doesn't really make any difference. I was told by a young mother that she and her family had been evicted from their apartment in Newtown so the landlord could increase his profits by renting it out on Airbnb. And if left to continue on this trajectory, this tourist town, the hillside, you know, could essentially become a hillside hotel zone. On the other hand, several senior citizens have told me that the only way they can age in place is to rent their property through Airbnb. And then there are other seniors who have said that they, that, who are renters, fear that they will be evicted in favor of the higher-paying Airbnb customers. Enforcement of the existing ordinance is difficult, and enforcement of any modified ordinance that makes it partly legal, maybe, is also going to be difficult. The program that was proposed is a program that is basically sanctioned by Airbnb. So that makes it somewhat suspect. There are towns, however, that are tourist towns that have faced this, and they have created very careful ordinances that equate Airbnb with bed and breakfast and apply all the rules and regulations to that commercial use.
Thank you for bringing up this very important topic, in particular, here in our town. I want to say, I understand what people that are opposed to short-term rentals are afraid of. The last thing I would ever want to see in Sausalito is an affordable housing unit that we lose to an Airbnb rental or to Sausalito turning into an antutu where, most of the time, no one actually lives in their homes. That's not something I want to see in Sausalito. But I also know that it's a reality, that the sharing economy is here. And as much as taxi drivers have tried to fight Uber, it seems like Uber continues to win. And people are going to keep using Airbnb. We can look at examples like New York City, where the city said, we're going to go ahead and outlaw Airbnb in its entirety, essentially. And then they still had something like 16,000 units, and it was one of their most successful markets. So we have to come to the table, and we have to address this. And I think it's great, Bill, that you're interested in looking at a solution for it. I appreciate the work that Susan did on the Short Term Rental Task Force, which was not sanctioned by Airbnb, as far as I know. But I would like to reopen the discussion on short-term rental because I've heard from many people who are aging in place and rely on the income that they receive from sharing a room in order to be able to stay here in Sausalito. And also from artists who are renting space in their studio. I think that we can reopen this conversation and find a way to make some money from the short-term rental units and the TOT tax, which, by the way, TOT is 37% of our budget here in town. So imagine the opportunities possible if we're making additional TOT from these short-term rentals and we're in charge of exactly how they're regulated. And we can make sure that we have a city that's participating in the process. I think there's opportunity for the city to make income. I think there's opportunity for us to solve this problem in a way that will protect the integrity and the history of the city of Sausalito. And I think we need to reopen the discussion around short-term rental.
What do you think were the driving factors of last night's discussion at the city council meeting regarding the ferry dock expansion? And quite another question along those lines. Do you support the increased Golden Gate Bridge fee for the next lease of Sausalito Ferry Terminal sites? So if we could address both of those in one question, that would be terrific. And we'll start with Melissa? Oh, no, no. We'll start with Bill. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand that last part of that question.
Yes, we're combining two things. So we're talking about the last night's
Forgot that part.
driving factors. And the second question is, do you support an increased Golden Gate Bridge fee for the next lease of Sausalito Ferry Terminal sites? So we're talking about the expansion, the dock expansion, and/or the Sausalito Ferry Terminal sites.
Yeah, it still doesn't make sense to me. Anyway. What happened last night was something that has started two or three years ago, or three years ago roughly. And that was that the city finally had to face up to the fact that the ferry landing project has been one of the most mishandled large projects that this town has ever seen. The intent of the ferry was that originally it was, it was a commuter ferry. It has become more than that, and that's fine because that theoretically takes cars off the road and all that sort of stuff. But what Bridge District has done over the years has let the existing float that's out there deteriorate. And when they, when they started, when they got TARP money in 2008, stimulus money, the extent of $11 million to design a new float, they went ahead and did all of that work without any conversation at all with any of us for almost six years. And it was not until December 4th of 2014 that the Bridge District came to BCDC, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, for their final permit, expecting full well that they would get the permit and they'd start construction. A handful of folks, about eight of us, I guess, went down to that commission and said, wait a minute, this is wrong. We don't know anything about it. You're doubling the fill in the bay to do this. That's not what BCDC is all about. And BCDC turned around and said, if you don't have the, to the Bridge District, if you don't have the support of the city, we're not going to give you the permit. So for the last two and a half years, we have been working on this.
Thank you. Melissa?
Well, let me start by saying I really don't like bullies in general. And I was really unhappy with the way that the Golden Gate Bridge District essentially treated us like they were a big bully when we didn't like the first two versions of the ferry landing project. They wrote us a letter and essentially said, we don't need your permission. Yes, we are a small seaside community and not a transit hub. But you know what? We are very proud of our small seaside community status. And you can see, based on what happened with the ferry landing, that we're more than willing to go ahead and fight for it. I've been at, I was at the meeting last night, and I want to commend city staff and the city council, and even the Golden Gate Bridge District for the work that they did to revise the ferry landing project. You know, we came to the point where the gangway is now 12 feet. There are no belvedeers. And one thing that I was really impressed by, and that was a positive, that came out of this bullying from the Bridge District, is that I saw the In Above the Tides and the Yacht Club come together in a really impressive way to work on conditions that they wanted to see. And I always like it when people come together. And there were a lot of folks who were very impassioned for the ferry, against the ferry. At this point, I think we saw with what's happened in Sonoma that we need to have emergency preparedness. We need the ferry. We need the ferry to be ADA compliant. And I'm happy to see that the city council unanimously passed the ferry. I think they did that because there's been a lot of hard work into making this project go forward. But I have to say that I was disappointed by the way that we had to come to this, that we had to essentially, well, we had to sue the Golden Gate Bridge District in order to be able to work together to find a solution to this. And going forward, I would hope that we could all come to the table in a more effective and responsible way to solve problems like this.
So the ferry landing has been a really important issue in town for several years, and a lot of people have voiced their opinions about it. And I think the public process has been really important to getting to a good solution with the ferry landing. The Bridge District did come to town with an oversized proposal. But over the years, with good work on behalf of a lot of citizens and our city council, I believe that we've achieved a good compromise. I know not everybody is happy with this, but I think we need to move forward. And we've got a good ADA compliant, safe ferry landing that will serve us in an emergency and continue to serve our commuting population, of whom I'm one. You know, it's been very frustrating with the schedule slips on the ferry and not being able to get home for dinner with your kids on time. And so I think this will go a long way. It was great to see the city council vote 4-0 and really come together on this issue. They worked hard to get important conditions attached that were proposed by the In Above Tides, the Sausalito Yacht Club. And they also fought hard for congestion management conditions, which I think will serve us well. It will serve as a starting point for moving forward with landside improvements that we desperately need. You know, in terms of the lease, the city was not in the price of the lease. I think we have a lease that has some ridiculously small number. I can't remember if it's a dollar or $50 or $50 a month. So it's very small. And so when we have an opportunity to really renegotiate the lease, we should obviously take a strong position and go for something closer to market rate. So for that question, I definitely, this was not the time to do that. This was not a lease negotiation. This was whether we should give consent under the lease. But when we do have the opportunity, I think we should definitely take it.
What's your attitude towards Plan Bay Area as it relates to Sausalito? We'll begin with Melissa.
I'm not familiar enough with Plan Bay Area to say how it relates to Sausalito, unfortunately. I'm assuming that it's the, it has to do with the Emergency Preparedness Plan. Is that correct? No? Okay, well, I'll let Susan take this question.
You're next, right? Yeah, no, I am. Yeah, I'm not entirely, is Plan Bay Area the A-Bag? Okay. So the Association of Bay Area Governments is a collective, is an organization that plans region-wide for things like housing and transportation, as I understand it. I do not know the specifics of the plan and what it says for Sausalito. I do know that, specifically, but I do know that many communities in Marin have been arguing for Marin to be categorized as not an urban environment, but more of a suburban environment, so that the expectations for housing and transportation will be right-sized for our communities. So to the extent that that is the question, I think that that's a legitimate point of view and that people in Marin have been doing a good job weighing in on those issues. That said, I think we do have to, you know, take accountability for making progress on housing and transportation issues in our community in a way that's right-sized for our small town.
Plan Bay Area also is driven largely by the Metropolitan Transit Transportation Authority, which has identified Sausalito as a transit hub. The gateway to Marin County and points north. And if that's true, I think, if you think congestion downtown is bad now, if they're allowed, if that becomes reality, the downtown will be lost to any of us that even now think that it's worth using or going to. The problem with Plan Bay Area is that it focuses on everything and considers essentially nothing because it doesn't pay attention Because it doesn't pay attention to the specifics of the towns, the locations, and so on, where they apply their projections for the future. Projections for the future are very peculiar. I mean, Sausalito has been 7,145 people since 1990. And their projections say that it's going to increase by 3% a year. Really? Where? And so unfortunately, we haven't played enough of a role, I don't think, in controlling what the regional authorities have been doing.
Please give us your comments and opinions on the design and cost of Dunphy Park. We'll begin with Susan.
So I was a strong proponent, with many of you in the room, to get Measure F passed. And I'm really proud of the work that our community did to pass Measure F to fund and maintain our amazing parks. We have some of the greatest parks in Marin, but they are seriously in need of repair. And I won't repeat the statement that I made at one of my first public hearings in Sausalito when I said that I thought Robin Sweeney needed a facelift and I found out that she was sitting in the front row. So I won't go there, but they are in need of repair. That was my entree into Sausalito politics. I'm still here, but anyway. So I'm really proud of our efforts to get Measure F approved. And I want to see that money put to work for our community. We've already been able to renovate Robin Sweeney Park. And now Dunphy, Southview, and MLK are on the list. Obviously, there's great, there's huge increases in construction costs everywhere in the Bay Area. And it's very hard to account for those. I believe that even if we can't pay for these upgrades with the money that we were able to put forward in Measure F, that our community can either decide to do some design engineering and maybe not have the beautiful parks that we thought that we might have. We can go out to the public and we can try to raise some money for the community or we can find other money in our budget. All I have to say is our resources, our parks are so valuable to this town that I will do everything that I can in my role on the city council or continue as a private citizen to make sure that our parks look as great as they should.
Susan, now I know why I got Robin Sweeney's endorsement. I agree that the parks are very important elements to, to the quality of life again in our town. What bothered me to begin with about Measure F was that the budgets that were sold to us were budgets that, cost estimates that were done years before that Measure F was on the books. So not one of them was brought up to date. The situation now with Dunphy Park is that the city has put the bid out for only half a bid. Because the first look at what the actual cost would be to do the whole park was literally twice what they had in the bank to do it. And the process was interesting in that there was a lot of community involvement, not a lot of community, but some community involvement in the design of it. And a group of people designed it. And then they turned it over to another group of professionals to turn it into, into construction documents, who made some changes and so on. By the time they were done, they, they had worked their way through a substantial number or substantial amount of the money that they had in professional fees. And then when they put it out the bid, they found that they could only build half the park. It's a little bit like the Smarttrain. Costs twice as much and it goes half as far. And what I would do is make sure, that's my job. This is kind of things, those are the kinds of things that I do. I spend a lot of time doing cost estimates. And, and they're pretty good. And I work the budgets. And that's what I would bring to the council.
Hold your applause, please. What will you do to?
You skipped me. That's okay. I mean, I also just wanted to quickly respond to the Plan Bay Area piece. I mean, as I said, I have not served on any boards or commissions, so I was not familiar with the vernacular specifically or that plan. But I will say I'm a big believer in regional cooperation. And I think it's really important that we work together with the county of Marin and neighboring counties to be, to have a transportation plan. I will review Plan Bay Area and I will post something about it on my website later this week, so you can see my thoughts on that. And I apologize for not being prepared on that specific topic. On the Dunphy Park piece, I want to, yes, I know there's a lot of controversy around the cost of Robin Sweeney Park and, you know, Measure F. I agree wholeheartedly with both Bill and Susan that it's very important that we maintain our parks, that they are part of what makes our town so great. I have many memories of playing in Robin Sweeney Park before I went to the library with Patty Schmidt's daughter and many others from the nursery school that I see in the audience. But on Dunphy Park specifically, I'm the neighbor of Dunphy Park. I live on a boat in Bridgeway Marina. Some of my neighbors are here. And everyone I've talked to, when I go over there for bocce or folks that live in boats nearby, have said, what's going on with Dunphy Park? Why can't we reopen Dunphy Park? Why are we moving the bocce ball court? Why, what's happening with the cruising club? And I, what I can say, take, take away from that is beyond the cost piece. And I'm sure that we can work out a way to effectively pay for renewing and upgrading our parks. I would like to see more transparency and having a conversation about what exactly the plan is with all of the stakeholders again. Now, I know we can't reopen the planning process yet again, but if we could come together and talk about where everything's going to go now that the plan has been approved and welcome all, everyone who was at those meetings back together in one place to see what makes sense and how we can all work on and contribute to it together, that might help us pay for it, for example, if we're having a little trouble given some of the estimates. And it would also bring everybody in the community together. Because everyone I've talked to about Dunphy has something about it that they're not necessarily happy with. And I think we can have a conversation about why actually it's great for everybody.
Thank you. Bill, this one's for you. What would you do to address noise pollution in Sausalito to include leaf blowers and loud music?
Well, let's see, leaf blowers. I think there is an ordinance about when leaf blowers can be used and when they can't be used. And unfortunately, that's another piece of now ancient technology by comparison to everything else that we have, which, which, which keeps people from having to sweep their sidewalks and do all those kinds of things. They just blow it into the street. And I think if there is, I mean, I, it's bothered some certainly in the residential zones. And, and, but they're a fact of life. And so therefore, we have to just be able to isolate the time when they can be done. The other one, loud music. The interesting thing about that one is that I was talking, talking to the, talking to the Maddens, who have their office right across the street from that service station that's right over there, that, that plays music all the time. And, and, and the Maddens don't like that. And apparently, a lot of people in that general area don't like that either. So I guess there needs to be some sort of a maximum decibel for, for recorded music being played in the open. We have frequently gotten ourselves in trouble over the years. I remember back in, before I, before I lived here. Gaspies. You can hear that music all over, within blocks and all directions at night, especially in the 60s, when it was really fun to be here.
One of my favorite things about Sausalito is that we have a really interesting mix of artists, musicians, people on the hill, people on boats. And I love our live music in town. I love going to no-name bar. I love the open mic night there. And I think it's really great that we can come together around music. Jazz by the Bay was a really special thing that we all got to share all summer long, thanks to the hard work of city staff. And, but we do need to be responsible and respectful to our neighbors. We do have an existing noise ordinance. And I believe if you call the Sausalito Police Department, they would be happy to respond to your complaint and show up for you. If there are specific concerns around types of loud music, I would be happy to hear from any of you about that. On the leaf blower piece, I actually had an impassioned discussion with someone at the Chili Cook-Off specifically about leaf blowers. Apparently, there are now two types of leaf blowers, and one is louder than the other. And so if we could explore, no, seriously, this is something that matters to Sausalito resident. So, and I care about it. So if we could explore types of leaf blowers, because some are quieter than others, that might address that concern around leaf blower noise or noise pollution.
So where I grew up in New Hampshire, we used rakes. And when I first moved to California and was living in Palo Alto, I could not believe, I was in law school, and I could not believe the leaf blowers during the day would be home studying during the weekdays. And it was really annoying. And I thought, why aren't people using rakes? You know, they're just blowing things from one side of the yard to the other. Anyway, I've never really, in all the years I've lived in California, understood leaf blowers. But I had the same conversation at the Chili Cook-Off as Melissa did with a gentleman who was concerned about leaf blowers. And I agree with him. They are loud and they can be really annoying. And I think we can take a look at, he noted that there were some ordinances that other local jurisdictions had adopted that would provide rules around this issue. And I think it's definitely something that we should hear more about and give some consideration to. We can also think about what types of tools the city employees use because a lot of maintenance needs to happen at all of our parks. On the music front, you know, we do have a noise, noise art ordinance. And I think it's probably more of a question of enforcement than changing our ordinance. It has decibel levels and it has hours for outdoor activity. And, you know, but on the other hand, these activities that we have out in Dunphy Park and Gabrielson Park and around the Art Festival, they're all really important community building events. So we don't want to put a damper on those, but we do need to address residents' concerns around these issues. So, you know, I think we've got to find a balance there and some common sense approaches to dealing with those without kind of curbing the enthusiasm for some great music that's been a part of this town for a long time. So let's keep that happening.
Do we have ignore questions for the candidates? Anything out there? If you just raise your hand. Women's club?
Yeah, it seems so. We, uh...
Oh, hold your, you have to write it on a card, sir. Exactly. We have a protocol with the league. And here comes someone in the back circling around to give you a card. Thank you. So here's a good question. What's your vision for the future of Sausalito? And we'll begin with Melissa.
Thank you for this question. I, I think that one thing that we, everyone that's here tonight can agree on is that we all love Sausalito. It is a very special place. We are a group of people who have an amazing opportunity to live on the water and to be in a village-like atmosphere and also to share an amazing history. It's incredible that we are home to the Marin ship, which is the longest remaining World War II historical yard. And I, I want to be sure that my vision for Sausalito and our vision for Sausalito would be one that would preserve everything that we love about the Sausalito of today. However, I think one thing that I've seen is that there's kind of a divide between people who are just arriving here to Sausalito and people who have been here for a very, very long time. We're in the process right now of updating our general plan, which means we're making decisions about policy issues that are going to impact us for the next 20 years. And if we're going to do that right, we need to make sure that we're bridging old voices with new. It can't just be one side that gets to decide what Sausalito looks like for the next 20 years. We need to be able to listen to each other and have a vision that represents everything that we love and share about the history of this city and that also helps move us forward. We can be using technology more effectively, for example, to save money for city residents and to make things easier, applying for a permit online or checking when the ferry's going to arrive on your phone. But just because we're moving forward and advancing doesn't mean that we're going to lose what makes Sausalito great. So that's my vision for Sausalito. Thank you for the question.
Great. My vision of Sausalito looks a lot like Sausalito looks today. We have a diverse, vibrant community with amazing citizens and the most active group of volunteers in any community that I've ever lived in. We have a community that has more young families with children choosing to make their homes here. Our age-friendly policies have allowed more seniors to stay in their homes and age in place. Every day, we have residents who leave Sausalito to work in San Francisco and neighboring communities. But every day, we also have folks from neighboring communities coming here to work. We have a strong arts, maritime, and mariner population. This is just an amazing and diverse group of people. All these communities help make Sausalito a thriving and energetic place. It's a great place to live. So in terms of what we could do better, I see kind of four areas that I would want to prioritize in terms of my vision for Sausalito. The most important thing is to bridge the divide between all of these great communities that I've just talked about. And our main goal should be to bring us together and not apart. And that means having conversations in a respectful way, bringing collaborative, common sense approaches to issues, not approaches that divide us and pit us against each other. It's not constructive and it doesn't help our community. We've got so many great people here, all with wonderful ideas. We should listen to everybody. The second thing is I do feel like we need to balance our vibrant tourism industry with the impacts to our residents. We need to do more work on this issue. Tourism is a big part of our budget and we rely on that. But we also need our residents to be able to feel like they can go downtown and downtown is also a place for them. Third, I want to continue to provide strong financial stewardship so that we can continue to provide excellent city services that we have been providing. And last, I'd like to focus on environmental sustainability. Thank you.
First of all, as a, as a member of the city council, my vision of Sausalito must be a reflection of what the vision of our 7,125 residents is. As I said, that number hasn't changed since 1990. That means that there are at least 7,125 distinct views of what the vision of Sausalito is. My suspicion is that it's really 14,250 because every one of us has two points of view, depending on what we're talking about that particular time. However, when pressed for what makes their life in Sausalito so special, they often answer with their feelings about the place. How its character as a small town near a large metropolitan area, surrounded by an abundance of open space and water, is important to them. Though they also complained about the increasing traffic congestion both going north and south. But that minor aggravation aside, in general, I think most of the people in Sausalito like things pretty much as they are. And they seek what provides the greatest sense of safety and comfort. Their vision of the future is much like the present. Their vision of the future is much like the present, and they would say that the nature of Sausalito should be in the hands of those who will strive to give the next generation the best of what we enjoy today.
Sausalito has a chain store ordinance. Do you support or oppose this? And what is your position? We'll begin with you.
Yeah. Yeah, so we do have a formula retailer or a chain store ordinance in Sausalito, which tries to limit or give extra look at stores that have more than one, you know, that are the same type, like The Gap or Banana Republic or stores like that. And I think for a small town like ours, that's a very good idea. We have grappled on the Planning Commission with exactly how to implement our formula retailer, chain store ordinance. And I think it needs another look, but I think the goals that it seeks to implement are good. It's been just very hard with a couple of stores, especially here downtown, that have come in for conditional use permits. It's been really hard to decide if it is a chain store and what that constitutes. So I agree with the goals. I think we need an update on that. San Francisco has done some really good work on this issue. Other jurisdictions could be used as models, but I definitely agree that those types of stores in this type of community should get a closer look.
I'll be quick about this, because I don't really have any, sorry, I don't really have anything to add to what Susan said. I agree that we do have a formula retail ordinance. That formula retail ordinance is a little confused and confusing and should be updated, and it should be enforced. Right, a small town like this, if it wants to have a unique character and wants to support local businesses and still have a giant tourist trade, it's very hard to keep the formula retail stores that tend to that kind of an audience from being here. So, as I said, I agree with Susan.
Great. Thank you for this question. I think one of the things, again, that it makes Sausalito so great is all of the wonderful, unique shops that we have and restaurants, but a lot of our businesses have been here for a really long time, and ordinances like this help us protect those small businesses. And I think that they do need to be observed, especially in a community like ours. But in fact, I would go a little bit further. I would like us to be doing more to preserve our small businesses that have been in Sausalito. San Francisco has adapted a legacy business program for businesses that have been in town for 30 years or more. They can apply to be denoted as a historical business, and they get protections on their lease, and it allows them to stay in place. And because as we grapple with the rising cost of affordability, it doesn't only impact you and me and our homes, it also impacts our commerce. And I don't want to see legacy institutions like Smithy's, where the building is up for sale, for example, closed because their rent goes up too high. I think that we should adopt a legacy business ordinance and continue to maintain the character and integrity of our town and protect and preserve what makes it great.
This next question is basically comments. Pardon me? Well, we are scheduled to run until 9:00 PM. We can go ahead and wrap this up. Sausalito has a lot of questions, and we want to wrap this up very shortly. So we can have this as a last question. Comments on implementation of task force recommendation have not always been used. Some feel this is a waste of time and money. What are your comments? And we'll begin with Bill.
That's a big question, because there have been so many task force recommendations that have landed on the shelf and/or in the round file over the years that I've been here. And I've been involved with a number of them. I think that, I think that it's, that sometimes task forces are used as cover for the council not doing their job. They will set up a task force to address a problem that is too hot for them to handle. And then, when the task force makes their recommendation, they don't do anything about it. So it gets them off the hook. If that's what you're referring to, I think it is. On the other hand, there are a number of task forces that have been extraordinarily The one that ended up doing the needs assessment for both the police and the fire buildings after the first one was rejected was a very useful and productive task force, which actually did produce things that were used. Both of those buildings were pretty much done, the needs assessment was done by the task force rather than an outside consultant, and it worked. So probably two things. One, task forces, depending on how they're set up and whether or not they're really supported, or whether they're just covered, will determine whether or not they're useful. Also, the people who sign up to do those task forces make a major difference in the quality of the work that comes out.
Thank you for this question comment. I think this brings up a really important point. So right now, as we've heard, the General Plan Advisory Committee is at work determining the next 20-year vision for Sausalito. Last week, I went to the Marinship Land Use Subcommittee meeting for this GPAC. And I have to say, I was really disappointed. And the reason I was disappointed is because there was a great Marinship report in 2010, the WHAM report, which brought together stakeholders from all over town, and they put together a great group of recommendations. And this meeting was started not by the members of the GPAC, who by the way are extremely capable and impressive Sausalitans who know the town very well, but by consultants who started the meeting by saying, what's it like to be a business leader at the Marinship? Okay, didn't we answer this question about 16 times and give you a lot of our time and energy in putting together recommendations specifically for you? Shouldn't we be moving forward and saying instead, we saw your recommendations on the WHAM report. Based on that, is this still true, and how do we move forward? This is exactly why I think we need new leadership and a fresh perspective in Sausalito. We have the information we need from these task forces, and I think we need to start working to move them forward. And to do that, we have to start uniting old voices with new and get going on taking those recommendations and us Sausalitans moving them forward. Thank you.
So I definitely agree that the WHAM report, which was done in 2010, is one of the most important reports that has been done in Sausalito in recent time. It is a great summary of what was going on in the Marinship in 2010. It's important cultural, industrial, and artistic heritage and past in Sausalito, and it's just got amazing recommendations about what should happen in the Marinship, from preserving our working waterfront to suggesting possible new land uses, to retaining the cultural and maritime nature of the Marinship. And that was an amazing report, and it's really been sitting there since 2010, you know, not being moved forward. And I really hope that the General Plan Advisory Committee will take a very close look at that and move forward with some of those great recommendations. I think that's an example of where an old committee that was put together to do really hard work put a lot of thoughtful consideration into that. You know, sometimes task forces can be good. They can air, give people in town a chance to voice their opinions and really come together and put forward solutions to the city council. And I found that my time on the short-term rental housing task force was really valuable, and we came up with some good suggestions. The city council rejected them, but I thought it was really helpful, and it was great for me to work with other local residents on that. So I think in some ways, they can be helpful, but ultimately, we probably have too many of them, and we need to be a little more selective about exactly what we choose to focus on and give real energy and meaning to those that we do do.
Excellent. Thank you, candidates. This ends our question period. We have this many more questions to go through, but these can be answered and those similar to it on our Voters Edge website, where the candidates can create a statement. You can read their top three priorities and see them side by side. This video will also be available, along with any articles and opinion pieces that are written about the Sausalito City Council race. I wanted to let you know that before the candidates make their closing statement, Election Day is November the 7th. The last day to register to vote is October the 23rd, except for voters who would like to change their voting registration, their political party. So you can do that up until two weeks prior to the election. On Election Day, you can go in person and register to vote and vote in the Elections Department at the Civic Center, Room 121. Voters can mail their ballots on Election Day, and they will be counted as long as they arrive within three days of the election. Election and candidate information can be found at votersedge.org. I hope you all have an opportunity to visit. We have some candidates who have created their own personal webpages and others that need to create their web.
I'm on it.
We'll have a two-minute closing statement, starting in reverse order with Bill.
I thought it was a one-minute statement, so mine will be a one-minute statement. Past city councils and mayors have repeatedly entrusted me with varied and often contentious assignments, many of which focused on nourishing and enhancing that strong sense of place we call home. The nuanced and diverse soul of Sausalito is why, after re-traveling to even the most exotic places on the planet, we feel so content when we return to our town. My successful architectural practice taught me a variety of skills that will be useful on the council. I have the vision and the strategic foresight of a leader. I have the organizational, the fiscal, and personnel skills of a business manager. And I have the perception and the passion of an artist. I value these facts. I value the facts, the figures, and the budgets, but I relish the unique qualities of Sausalito. These distinct and sometimes contradictory talents will always energize and guide my deliberations as a member of your city council, and I'd be honored to have your vote.
Susan?
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, especially those of you who have stayed till the bitter end. You've heard a lot from all of the three candidates, and I appreciate this evening to get to know, to have you all be able to get to know the three of us better. I want to tell you why I think I would be the best candidate for this job. I'm dedicated to this town, and there's one campaign promise that I think I can make, and that's that I will always listen to every member of the community and will work hard to find solutions that work for the entire community. I cannot promise that I will always agree with everyone. That is just not possible. But I will always work for common sense solutions that work for our community. I really want to bridge the divide and work in a way that brings us together and not apart. I believe that I'm your best choice for city council, and I respectfully ask for your vote, either by mail this week or on November 7th. Thank you so much.
Thank you again so much to everyone who took the time to be here. Have immense respect for anyone who is this dedicated and engaged in public service and in the interest of our community. I think we've heard a lot from many of the candidates here tonight, and I think it's clear that I'm not necessarily part of one side of the political factions in town or the other. I just want to listen to all of you. I think I have a lot of experience that would really help bring us together and move us forward for the next 20 years by listening to old voices that have been in town for longer than when I went to nursery school, and the new voices and new families who just arrived here and want to make their lives here for the next 20 years, and then some. I promise I will always show up for you. I will always respond to you. I plan to always host a weekly office hours where I can make myself available and answer any questions you might have, and that is what I would like to do on your city council. And I respectfully would like to ask for your vote and your support. Thank you so much for participating in this process.
I'd like to thank our candidates, Melissa Blausdahl, Susan Cleveland, Bill Werner, along with the Sausalito Women's Club and the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'd like to thank you all for participating in the process. Thank you to our timekeeper, Ann Batman, and our question orders, Ann Laser here in the red, and Nancy Bell. I'm Vida Flores, your moderator. Thank you.